Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 16th, 2021, meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. I hope everyone's doing well tonight. Everybody looks like they're doing well. Eventually, we'll all be in the room at the same time to see that in person. But for now, we're still in our virtual worlds. First up tonight is the approval of the minutes from June 2nd, 2021. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from the June 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
I was not present at the meeting, however, I did view the meeting and therefore I can vote A on minutes.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Winborn?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. That passes unanimously. Thanks very much. Next up is a recommendation to the Marin City Council on a zoning text amendment. Why don't we bring Kirk over? Or is that right, John? Or yeah, there's Kirk, okay. And instead of reading the whole lengthy introduction, Kirk, I'll let you take care of that.
Okay, thank you. Well, good evening, Commissioners. This is a recommendation for text amendment CTAM-8860-2021, which proposes to define funeral homes and cremation services, indicate where funeral homes are prohibited, allowed or allowed as a conditional use in various zones, and indicate where cremation services are prohibited or allowed as a conditional use in various zones. The joint public hearing was held on May 3rd, 2021. The planning commission record closed on June 4th, 2021 at 5:00 PM. There are currently 16 exhibits in the record, and five of those were received after the joint public hearing. As noted during the joint public hearing, this text amendment will prohibit cremation services on property that is within 500 feet of any property that contains a residential use. The staff notes that this is a property line to property line measurement. It allows funeral homes to offer onsite cremation services only as a conditional use in the CP, C2, CBD, CD, I1, I3, and MXD zones, where it is not otherwise prohibited due to being within 500 feet of a residential use. And it allows onsite standalone cremation services only as a conditional use and only in the I1 and I3 zones, where it is not otherwise prohibited due to being within 500 feet of residential uses. And cremation services are no longer allowed by right in any zone, even as an accessory use to a funeral home. So the conditional use provision included in the text amendment is defined in the city code and requires the issuance of a special permit by the city council. And that permit requires a separate application, which is subject to a public hearing process, and requires the city council to make five findings. And in summary, those findings must show that the conditional use will not be incompatible or inharmonious with the general character of the neighborhood, will not be detrimental to the use, peaceful enjoyment, economic value, and development of surrounding properties, will not cause objectionable noise, vibrations, fumes, odors, dust, glare, chemical contamination, or physical activity, will not adversely affect the health or safety of persons residing, working, or traveling in the neighborhood, and will not constitute a violation of any provision of the city code or other applicable law or regulation, such as federal, state, and city laws regarding emissions and noise. So staff is recommending that the planning commission, based upon the staff reports and the evidence in the record, recommend adoption of the text amendment to the city council. And staff is available to answer any questions regarding the text amendment.
Thanks, Kirk. In this case, this wouldn't leave anybody a non-conforming use at this point, right?
That is correct. All of the two existing funeral homes in the city, one is Thibodeau in Old Town, and the other one is Deval, which is just off of Frederick Avenue at Deer Park. Both of those currently are funeral homes that do not offer cremation services onsite. So there wouldn't be any change to them now. Of course, in the future, if they wanted to do anything based on this text amendment, because they are within 500 feet of residential uses, they would not be allowed to do onsite cremation services.
I just wanted to confirm there was nothing existing that was going to be falling into another category. The other thing I just want to clarify, in the record, there was some testimony or comment from the public and some concerned professionals in this arena about the types of cremation services. They get into sort of the science of it and some of the methods and means. I take it this ordinance doesn't really distinguish between those sorts of things. It's really a general, all-encompassing over, not restriction, but zoning amendment that covers cremation in general. Is that right?
That's correct. The fact, I mean, that when staff was researching the definition for cremation services, we did note that Maryland is one of the states that does allow the hydrolysis or the chemical cremation, as it's also known as. And so we did put that into the definition, because we felt that, you know, based on the public's concerns about emissions and things like that, even a chemical cremation does result in some emission afterwards. It's a different kind of emission, but it was still, it is still some sort of emission. So we felt that it was important to sort of cover all of those. And I think we actually made the definition a little more open-ended to try and capture any sort of future technological changes that would expand cremation services into other areas and things.
Sure, sure. Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? No, okay.
We're not in discussion yet. Never mind. Keep going.
So Kirk, our record's closed, correct? So it's really time for...
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So go ahead and do that, please, and then we'll move into discussion. Or I guess you did it as your part of the introduction. Is that right?
Yes, yes. So again, the staff recommendation is that the planning commission, based upon the staff reports and evidence in the record, recommend the adoption of this text amendment to the city council.
Great, thanks. All right, Matt, so please jump in with discussion.
I was just gonna sort of frame the con, right? Which I think we understand technologically, it was a great deal of backup and did a little research of my own. It's an interesting, you know, sort of service that's provided. And there's obviously incinerators themselves of all types, including, you know, animal experimentation, animals themselves, and humans and others. There's just, it's a huge industry. And so I'm completely understanding of being able to have a public body oversee the exceptions to be made within certain zones. And all that's to say that I normally am sort of uncomfortable. I want to make things as clear and clean and predictable for business owners and new businesses as possible and adding as many exceptions to a zoning code as possible just makes, for paperwork often. I think this is one of the few good examples of a very complex issue that is kind of broad and probably expanding technologically. So making sure that something is being constructed and placed correctly is, I think, a good, a good, you know, special exception, exception. Sorry. So I'm supportive.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Anybody else? No. To piggyback on that, I would add that, you know, given that we don't have precedent in the city for this type of facility, that there's some oversight that does allow for it to happen, but with a little bit more of an eye to it when it does seem very reasonable, given the concerns, not only from the neighbors, but kind of the industry, the science at large and issues that may arise from something like this. So it seems very reasonable. And of course, down the road and in the future, if things change in terms of technology or what's reasonable, this could certainly come up for another zoning text amendment if it needs to. But it seems reasonable for the moment. If there's no other comments, let me just take a pause and see if anybody wants to jump in. I guess not. Okay. All right. Well, then is there a motion, please, on our recommendation to the Marin Council?
Chairman, I move that the planning commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted to the record and the findings and the final staff analysis, recommend the approval of, I'm sorry, I take that back. I'm reading the wrong document here. Somebody else, please, go forward. Proceed.
Go ahead, Danny.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report, findings and recommendation grant SP-87.
Wrong one, Danny.
Is that the wrong one, too?
All right.
I'm sorry.
Third time's the charm.
Do you have it, Phil?
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission recommend adoption of text amendment CTAM-8860-2021 to the Marin City Council as presented.
Oh, I'm second.
All right, it's removed. And seconded, Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins. I think you're muted. What did you say?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you for that. Yeah, I don't know. That was...
That was the second. We looked at the second one.
Although if we had let them both go, we could have moved right to adjournment by this point.
I guess so. All right. Well, that passes. And that was the, thanks very much all. And thank you, staff, for a very thoughtful and very thorough research into what this is all about and what will make sense for us in the city. Appreciate that. All right, that takes us to, what does that take us to? SDP-8551-2020, construction of a daycare early childhood education building at 151 Lakeland Drive in the MXD Mixions Development Zone. And this again is another recommendation to the Marin Council on an SDP amendment. And presented from staff is Jasmine Ford. Good evening, Jasmine.
Good evening. This is a recommendation to the Mayor City Council for schematic development plan application, The subject property is located at 151 Lakeland Drive in Zone MXD. Actually, IT staff, can I please have page 55, please? Next page, please. The applicant filed, at page 54, please, or sorry, 55. Thank you. So the applicant filed an SDP application requesting approval for the construction of a new daycare early childhood building and associated parking lot. A joint public hearing for this application was held on May 3rd. And during the course of the hearing, there were comments raised about stacking and queuing of vehicles, enrollment in vehicle traffic, building orientation, environmental impacts, and noise impacts. Staff received outside correspondence from the public, which are exhibits 46 to 228 in the record. The planning commission's record closed on June 8th at 5:00 PM. There are currently 234 exhibits in the record. The applicant submitted a response letter and exhibit questions raised during the public hearings, which are exhibits 229 and 230 in the record. So it's important to note that it outlined the empowerment history of the subject property. The subject property was included as part of approved SDP application for the Lakelands, Phase 1, Section 2. We approved application, identify this site as a 6,000 square foot restaurant. Later on, a site plan was approved by the planning commission on November 5th, 1997, with the building outline and the parking, but noted that a site plan for the application needed to be submitted for the architecture, but it was never submitted, and that's why the building was under built. Now, while SDP approvals never expire, final site plan will expire unless vested. In this situation, the final site plan associated with the approved restaurant is vested, all because the restaurant that's shown on the final site plan has been completed. If an application came in for a restaurant and performance with that final site plan, the architecture would be approved by the planning commission. This would be legally bound to process the total permit. And this will also approve the city from requesting an updated traffic statement since the approved vested site plan met the city FDA's department at that time. And lastly, the approved site plan also included the abandonment and replacement of the forest conservation easement that's on the site to accommodate the new restaurant and parking. Next page, please. During the hearing, there are comments raised about...
Hey, Jasmine. Hey, Jasmine. Am I, I'm hearing you get kind of muddled on the sound. Is anybody else hearing that as well?
Yes.
Do you know where your mic is? Is there a way to maybe stay on top of your mic a little bit? I don't know.
You hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So during the hearing, comments were raised about the existing vehicle stacking and queuing issues at the intersection of Lakeland Drive and Great Seneca Highway, and how the proposed development had further impact to the traffic volume and circulation. As noted in the letter, 11 vehicles can be stacked onsite between the entrance driveway and the parking lot. The applicant's of opinion that the number of parking space provided and the length of the parking driveway will not back out onto Lakeland Drive and will not cause a detriment to vehicles on that road. Now, shown on the screen, you can see noted that the plan was further improved for vehicle circulation maneuvering for a one-way. Now, staff notes that a one-way module requires that parking need to be angled. So that's why that condition's on there for the applicant to revise the plan to show angled parking spaces. Further site improvements included a lane divide at the entrance to separate vehicles entering and exiting the site and designated employee parking spaces located to the north and west of the parking lot, with parent parking located closer to the building to further minimize the pickup and drop-off times. The applicant also investigated ways to mitigate outbound and inbound conflicts along Lakeland Drive. Due to existing utilities and grades on the west side of Lakeland Drive, a separate deceleration lane coming inbound to the daycare entrance cannot be constructed. However, the applicant noted that the radius of the driveway can be improved to allow smoother and quicker entrance onto the subject property. To improve the outbound traffic, the applicant proposes to reduce the elbow and winding the east side of Lakeland Drive to increase the stacking capacity to 20 vehicles and eliminate the potential of conflicts with vehicles exiting the subject property. In the revised plans, it shows a planetary sketch, which is in red, that shows a second right turn handling. While staff finds that this could be an option, further collaboration with the Maryland Department of Transportation and the Maryland State Highway Administration would need to occur to measure the feasibility of the second right-hand turn. And staff's opinion that a simpler solution is just to reduce the elbow and expand that width of Lakeland Drive to allow more stacking. Staff has received a number of complaints about the safety of the intersection of Great Seneca Highway and Lakeland Drive. In response to these concerns, staff have reached out to the Maryland Department of Transportation to evaluate improving that intersection. That had requested that the Maryland Department of Transportation to investigate the concerns of the unprotected left-turn movement from northbound on Great Seneca Highway to westbound Lakeland Drive. And there was also concerns about the right-turn lane from Lakeland Drive eastbound to southbound, say, Great Seneca Highway. And they will get back staff later on with what they found on their investigation. During the hearing, Bryan Brooks, Everbrook Academy, I noted that on the site plan, it does note that the maximum for the site is 240 children and 25 staff, but noted that the maximum is never reached. And usually for those sites with a size, they usually have attendance of 75 children on the site. And the numbers for enrollment is determined by, you know, the demographics of the neighborhood and also the state's requirements with that instruction and children ratio. In response to questions, if Everbrook Academy was able to calculate the number of pass-by trips that occurred, so fortunately noted, Everbrook does not have that level of detail, but they do know that currently there's 90,000, sorry, 9,000, 260 families with active or pending children in the care. And out of those families, 21,482 families have more than one active or pending child in Everbrook's care. The child occupancy rate per car visiting Everbrook can be expected to be approximately 1.2 children per vehicle. Everbrook accepts their release at 6:30 AM. And the arrival of children clearly determines by the parents' work schedule. So many of the drop-offs occur at 6:30 AM and 8:00 AM. The greatest number of children arrived at the peak hour of 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. As noted in the response letter, Everbrook does not operate like a private or a public school, where there's influx of traffic stacking on the site. Everbrook has specific drop-off protocols. So children can be in escorted out of the facility safely. So when a child arrives, the parent must walk their child into the facility, sign them in, and that's when they're escorted into their classroom. So there was a section made in their letter that the around time for parents is 10 minutes for each parent. That parking space can accommodate for six drop-off transactions per hour. And for the capacity of the entry available, parking field is 120 parking spaces per hour. And then it's more parking spaces that this facility will probably need during the day, let alone around the three-hour arrival period. Lastly, the applicant conducted an investigation of the accident data at the intersection of Lakeland Drive and Great Seneca Highway. The accident pattern report does not indicate that this intersection operates on inherently dangerous levels. So the accident demonstrates that the intersection of Great Seneca Highway operates in a manner, there's perception that the operation of the intersection is unsafe for driving. And Memo didn't note that one way to reduce is the left turn, remove of the left turn. There was a left turn phase, and that's what the staff was asking for the DOT to look at. There was a question about why the building was layout on the property, and the applicant noted that the building's orientation and location was driven primarily by the topographic considerations. Since the property is located at the elevation above the street grade, the Lakeland Drive building need to be cited in a manner that provide adequate distance for the entrance driveway to reach grade levels of the building. It would be flat in order to meet Everbrook's requirements of no steps to enter and exit the building. During the hearing, there was a question raised about whether specimen tree number four can be preserved, and as noted in that letter, the tree cannot be saved due to its location in the center of the site and impact the proposed parking lots. And if they would need to preserve that tree, that required the redesign and the relocation of the parking lot and the building while maintaining setback and dimension requirements. There were concerns from the public about the amount of trees being removed for the project. The applicant is proposing to preserve 0.36 acres of forest area and provide 0.32 acres of reinforced area, which is more forest on the site than the forest conservation law would normally require. Development of the subject property as a standalone parcel of land under the forest conservation law will require preservation of less forest area as occurring through the directives of staff to meet expected forest protection requirements set forth in the original approved forest conservation plan for the Lakelands. And as part of those eight more station efforts, the landscape plan includes a priority of shade evergreen trees. App can also note that the approved natural resources inventory plan notes that 2.78 acres on the property is characterized as pioneering or successful vegetation, which from an environmental standpoint has lower value or importance than mature and original growth woods. Trees that are being removed are deemed to be inferior in quality, and the mature forest will be preserved. And on the site plan, someone noted that a conservation easement was identified to be revised. The conservation easement was on the site plan for the Lakelands back in 1992, but it was never recorded in a plat for the property. As noted earlier, the previous site plan was approved for a restaurant use for that site and had intended to dissolve the easement. The restaurant was never developed. Easements can be dissolved or relocated in association with a site plan. And it was a precedent that exists for this for the city. And there was questions about noise impacts. And at this stage, the applicant noted that a noise study was not conducted or required due to the limited volume of outdoor noise activity anticipated at the post-facility. The applicant notes in the response letter that the city of the Gaithersburg follows Montgomery County's noise ordinance. Outside noise levels in residential areas cannot exceed 65 dva for daytime and 55 dva for the nighttime. The applicant concluded that Everbrook Academy will have phase recess periods during the day, given the distance between the outdoor play area and the closest residence. Everbrook does not believe that the noise generated by children will exceed the limits established in the county's noise regulations. And in conclusion, staff has reviewed the applicant's response letter and is of the opinion that he has to address the comments raised by both the Mayor City Council and the planning commission and will recommend approval this evening. If you have any questions, I'll be available here to answer. And we also have Tony Berger, who's also the director of public works, to answer any sort of question you have.
All right, thanks. Jasmine, I have to ask, though, whatever, is your mic near a stack of paper or something? We're getting some interference. I don't know if it's near. Anyway, not a big deal, but just, it is a little noisy.
Could I ask a quick question? Because I want, while it's fresh in her mind, Jasmine, and I thought it was a little important, but there was a little drop-off right when you were talking about the accident data. Can you just go to the beginning of that section? And there were a couple of things that dropped out. Just, I don't want you to go through the whole thing, but just the beginning of what you said, because I think that was a very big issue that came up with lots of public comment.
So there was, so they reviewed the accident data that I noted in the staff report. They reviewed it for five years, and they noted that based off that data that the intersection didn't operate in dangerous, in dangerous capacity.
Okay, that's important, and that's what I didn't hear. Thank you so much for that, because that was a huge issue with the community. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, our record is closed, but we do have some, we have an opportunity to ask questions of staff for clarification, and then we'll move into discussion. So Commissioners, any questions on the presentation or the follow-up from the public hearing and work sessions?
Well, I just want to, I mean, public safety and accident data and turn in and that kind of thing. I'm glad that Jasmine spent a lot of time on that and gave us some very good information. You know, the requirement that parents must escort children in and that kind of thing. I mean, because the whole issue that was preventing, I guess, this, well, I'm not going to say preventing, but the whole issue was there was a lot of safety concerns, and I appreciate you addressing those for us tonight.
Good point. Any questions on the application or on the information presented tonight? I cannot see anybody jumping in just yet. Let me, let me ask a couple. So Jasmine, the trail, and this came up, I think, during the public hearing, too. There's a trail to sort of the southwest side of the site. The boundary lines on this plan are the property lines, right?
If you can pull up page 55. Actually, you talk about, so there's an existing pedestrian trail. Actually, it is within the property, but it's not going to be impacted by this project.
Well, no, but what I wonder is, at least I'm assuming that if the ownership doesn't change, hands, I don't know if it's a lease or a sale between the developer and, or the owner, the master developer ends the developer of the site. But at some point, access to and off the site becomes a liability issue for owners. So what I'm driving at is, I assume the trail's not going away, but is there a need to dedicate an easement or a right-of-way or something for that trail? That's sort of a fundamental question. But along with that, since this SDP already exists for building on this site, and we're making a recommendation only on the SDP, not a final site plan or even a preliminary site plan, right? What specifically will vest or will be approved with this, with this updated approval to the SDP?
Repeat that again.
Okay. So there's already an approved SDP and site plan for this, this site, right? And we're not looking at final site plan tonight or amended final stuff, and we're only looking at an SDP recommendation. So assuming it moves forward and is approved, what, what specific items are vested with the SDP approval?
It would just be this, that, because it's the final site for that SDP.
I can jump in there. So final site plans are what vests the use. So while the SDP gets approved until some of the final site plan gets approved later on, the vesting site plan is still going to be the one of record, which is the restaurant site.
The night, the 6,000 square foot restaurant.
Correct.
So what does this SDP approval give them?
It gives them the right to move forward with the final site plan to build this, you know, daycare facility. But out of that, they are there, they could not come in right now to a final site plan, because the final site plan would not be in conformance with the approved preliminary site plan, the SDP.
Okay, so to kind of break it down, it's really about the size of the building, right? It's not so much the final sighting of it or the final design of the site.
Well, yes and no, right? There's a number of triggers that essentially require an SDP to be amended. Those can be increasing the size of a building, change of use, or reorienting the building. In this situation, I would say all three are being triggered. It's a change of use. It's going from what was a restaurant building approved originally to a daycare facility. The orientation of the building, the restaurant was actually located closer to the lake. This one's actually closer now to Great Seneca Highway. And the orientation, right, again, while that, the restaurant, again, because of the nature of where we're sitting on the site, it was actually oriented again more towards Great Seneca. And this one, I would say, is more oriented westward, let's say, on the site.
And to be clear, they haven't relocated the curb cut for the driveway.
That is correct. That is the same exact curb cut that was previously approved with both the final site plan and the SDP.
So the proposed changes would really be on the Lakeland Drive side to try to alleviate some of the stacking or potential stacking problems. It's really about that. Okay.
Correct.
So the discussion, so I'm just making sure we frame up the discussion correctly in our recommendations for it, because they've shown a lot of detail. And my temptation is to begin to take apart this plan a little bit that really has things on it that are more related to final site plan. So I just want to be careful that we focus on what the SDP is really, really about. All right. So let me open it up for discussion based on that. Phil, I saw your hand first. I'm not sure.
I think I have just a quick question that...
I, I think I have just a, a quick question that was spurred in my mind by talking about the previously vested. Both schematic and final site plan for a restaurant. On, on the traffic side, since that really is probably, you know, ninety percent of the, the concerns we've heard from the public. Without going in and digging out the handbook. How do trip generation rates for a restaurant compare to what we're seeing for a daycare? I, my, my assumption is that they would be. You know, if the applicant built what they could build by right with the approved vested plans, that we'd see traffic generation. Much larger than a, a school, but that's just a gut feeling. So I'm curious if that's accurate or not. Or if we know.
Have anybody have a sense of that?
So I believe that is, okay, Greg.
I was gonna say, I am not sure on what the difference is in the chip generations, but I would believe that is accurate that a restaurant would generate more trips than daycare would.
I, I concur. I believe that's generally an accurate statement.
So I think, I mean, it, it's not. It, it's, it's just another point of context, I think, in, in the, in the context of this whole discussion that, you know, if. If an Applebee's decided to build on that site. It would, you know, A, there'd be nothing we could do to disapprove it because it's a by right development and B. It would likely be a worse, a worse condition than what the applicant's proposing. So I think that's a. Point of reference.
Potentially, yeah.
Okay, good. Uh, Lloyd, please.
John, and with respect to that, I believe the, uh, site was approved for a restaurant back in nineteen ninety five, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Jasmine?
Nineteen ninety seven.
Ninety seven. At that time, Lakeland's wasn't even developed. It was just an idea. So it was very, it would be very difficult to come up with any kind of numbers that would be valid, that would validate that site today. Based on the amount of people that are living in the Lakeland's at this time. Is that correct?
Well, the trip generation, I believe, would have been a, a, a formula that was based on a use, which would have been the restaurant, not necessarily.
Okay. My other question is also Jasmine, uh, you mentioned something about the state highway. Taking a look at the, uh, turn lane on Great Seneca going, I believe, south on that. Uh, highway, uh, what is the? Timeframe for the state to respond? And hasn't the state already made it very clear that they are going to expand that on?
I'm sorry, he said it.
Hasn't the state already stated that they will not look at Great Seneca Highway again with respect to expanding? That runway going south from off of Lakeland's?
Um, I noted in preliminary, uh, during the public hearing, there was a question about putting an entrance on Great Seneca Highway. And the state said they really can't give a recommendation until they see plans, but they can look at, you know. Staff just asked us to investigate ways, you know, maybe timing of the signal. Ways to help the intersection, um, much better for the residents. But I, I think what you're referencing was about the, um, entrance on Great Seneca Highway.
Correct, coming, coming out of Lakeland's, going into, going south, uh, that's the right-hand term. It goes over a bridge.
The, the bridge is present. Um, I'm not. I haven't been around as long as some others, Lloyd, so your recollection may, may be, um, in fact, true. Uh, we, we did reach out to S H A and ask them to evaluate the, um, possibility of. You know, creating a, an acceleration lane when you make the right turn. From Lakeland's Drive out onto Great Seneca Highway. Um, there's different things that you want to consider with that, and, and one of them is, you know, some control on that that. You know, you also don't want to create just a free right situation. Because you, you may have, you know, limitations, like you said, by a bridge that doesn't have the capacity for, um, additional width. At this time, right, that you, you end up with a short acceleration lane, but we did ask them to look at that. They indicated that they'll respond to us in about thirty days.
Thirty days. Okay, thank you. That answered that question.
I was muted. Any other comments, please?
I, I, I can't remember if I made this comment during the public hearing or not, but. As someone who's spent the last six years picking up and dropping off my kids at a daycare facility just like this, I have. Absolutely zero concerns about the traffic on the site or queues building up. I mean. If I was gonna, you know, bet the money in my wallet, I would bet that ninety-five percent of the time, half those spaces are gonna sit empty. Just, just based on the way these facilities work. So, so I think the concerns. About, you know, traffic flow out on Lakeland's Boulevard and at the intersection are all, are all valid, but. You know, as far as, you know, queues backing up out of the parking lot onto, onto the, you know, main road, I. I, I agree with, with staff and with the applicant that that's gonna be a, a non-issue.
Yeah, and I think, I think to their credit, they at least demonstrated, I, I have to say, just. Quite bluntly, the way they've shown the stacking is, is a little bit unrealistic, um, you know, nose to tail on these cars, but. Nevertheless, and, and it doesn't show school buses that end up getting in that queue when, um. When, um, you know, on mornings when the school buses are leaving from, from the, from the middle school, but anyway. Um, yeah, it, it seems like the queuing is at least demonstrated to be, um, to be there, whether it's ample or not, I, you know. We'll have to go on, on the data which suggests that it is. So Phil, any other, any other things you're concerned about or part of those comments?
I just want to make sure we're clear, looking at what's on the screen now and, and might make sure my reading of the packet was correct. Is this or is this not proposing a widening of Lakeland's Drive at, at the intersection for that right turn lane? I see the, the dashed red line. Is that something that's part of this application or, uh, you know, something for further study?
That'd be something for, for their study.
Okay.
Linear sketches. Ideas to help put that stacking on that route.
Okay, that's all for me.
All right.
So I'll, I'll add, John.
Go ahead.
Just before you wrap up, uh, that, um, you know, my perspective for the record is that this is overdesigned from a stacking and, and car. Uh, repository, and we've got too many spaces, too much stacking, too much asphalt, uh, for the actual use. So I'm, I'm, uh, not, I don't want this to be treated by us or by me at least as a sort of minimum in order to keep everyone safe. In my mind, this is an overreaction, uh, to the parking needs and the stacking needs for this facility, so. So just for the record. And then, uh, and, and, and I just gotta add to Jasmine, there's a funky little car that's sticking off there in the northwest corner of the. Of the grading plan that you might want to take off, or they might want to take off, but nobody cares, but it's, it was amusing.
That was actually a car that Otis Kent abandoned there about forty years ago.
It's forty years, it was, it was supposed to be there for the restaurant, but it never got put in.
It was a little VW bug. So to pick up on that, one of the things that, you know, the, the reason I leaned on this idea of what SDP really vested versus. What ultimately would become an amended final site plan. Is what I am a little concerned about is in an area that does have some really nicely developed now, um, landscape buffers and, and. You know, framed, framed entrances and, and all the things that are, that a mature landscape does for you. They've done two things that kind of compromise that. One is that they've built, um, and they paved edge to edge from their, on their development. Pad from the, the, the side face, the closest to Sena, Great Seneca Highway. All the way down to where the edge of their, their driveway lies with no interruptions for landscape buffer. Um, and then, and then the back end of the building, the service end of the building, including, um, what looks like a, a stormwater vault. You know, is facing back toward the entrance with, with less buffer potential than what was there when the original plan was done. So I, I don't, what I, what I'm kind of leading up to is, is to the extent that, as Matt said, there may be too much asphalt here. Um, I think there is. I don't, I don't think it's a thing. I think there is, and, but more from evidence that. The amount of green space and buffer that they'll be able to add. Once they do clear the site and grade it and do all they need to do, is relatively modest compared to what I think we would expect. If this building were some on others, on some other site. And, and it's, it's, it's ironic because this is actually the site that ought to have some really healthy buffers between. The active paved kind of busyness of, of the backside of this building and the entrance to the, to the community and the views and kind of backdrop to the lake. So. I, 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 I don't know how we posture this exactly, but. Assuming twelve thousand square, twelve thousand nine hundred square feet is an okay dimension for a building. Ten thousand could be better if we got a better sighting solution where. There were some buffers, there was a little bit less pavement, there was a little bit less of all of that that, that sort of scraped the site. It's not a precision type of play. It's like, I can't really offer that tonight as, as an actual number, but. From a final site plan direction, I think the architecture of the building, how it presents itself to the entrance, you know, the, the main drag of Lakeland's Drive. How the buffer is relating to the lake and to the entrance, they would need to be improved. And whether that's both architectural hardscape and landscaping. Or one or the other, you know, emphasizing one or the other, I don't know, but they both have to come into play more than what this site plan implies, I think.
Um, I'll, I'll echo your, your thoughts, John, and, and say that, you know, I'll, I'll repeat them with slightly different words, which is just that, uh. You know, I think, I think it's not about, uh, I think buffer is a dangerous word because then they just sort of throw, we all just sort of throw trees at it and. It looks good in plan, but I think this is actually a presentation, you know, threshold building is an entry to a, a community. Uh, needs to be treated with layered landscaping. We've talked about it a lot that, you know, low, medium, high, uh, and then, uh, you know, canopy. Uh, piece in combination that leads to what is, obviously we're putting hardscape out in front. Uh, and that, and the fencing, and then that facade that sits behind it and any mechanical that happens to be back there, because it's gonna be somewhere. Uh, we're gonna have to really sort of analyze that closely when it gets to, to site plan. For me, fifty feet off the road is, is plenty of room. To make it, um, so, uh, I'm, I'm not sure, you know, John, when John's talking about scale and shrinking the whole footprint, uh, maybe there's, there's a solution in there, but. Within fifty feet, a good designer should be able to solve that problem, uh, without just throwing a whole bunch of plants out.
And I think that, that holds true with the side, um, as it transitions from their, um, driveway, driveway down into the lake. Well, ultimately it's sort of a sloped, a sloped area that, that exposes that whole side of the project, um, to the lakeside. And I'm not sure how much flexibility they'll have for landscaping down into that area because there's some restrictions based on stream valley buffers and, and there's a. WSSC easement, and I'm sure they can't plant on top of that. So it, it all sort of is taken together, but I, I, I guess Jasmine and, and team. What I'd be looking for is if we, as we forward a recommendation, how do we incorporate this part of it, which is. Obviously some refinement revision to the plan before it becomes final site. And it's painfully obvious because they've already engineered the plan even at SDP, you know, so it's, there's, there's no mystery here about what they're up to, but. If it were another SDP, this would be a little bit more diagrammatic and, and some of the things we're talking about wouldn't be as, wouldn't be as big, but, but here clearly they are, so. How do we, how do we make that a part of this, this review?
Can we, um, let's look at the preliminary landscape plan of sheet one oh eight. That shows the building in relation to the proposed preliminary landscaping that they're thinking of doing on the site.
Okay, so in this case, to Matt's point, you know, if, if layering is the, is the cue that they're doing a good job with the entrance. It's really, it's one dimensional, a sort of one layer, there are one, one line of things happening. Um, and there's almost nothing happening on the, the side facing back toward the lake except at that little vault. So this is a pretty good indication. I think what I'm talking about needs, needs further look.
So we can definitely wrap this up, I think, into your, um, memo or to the Plant Mary City Council, um, with your recommendation tonight. Um, the other option is you could make a recommended condition to be included with the SDP. Um, that has the applicant continue to refine this, maybe before they make a final submission, um, to work with staff on that.
I, I mean, i- isn't the issue here that I think we're all struggling with is that. As John said, we've, we have documents in front of us that are far in excess of a typical SDP, and so. Part of this may be making clear that in recommending of, of approval of the SDP, assuming that's the route we go. We're very specifically recommending and only approving these certain elements which are part of an SDP and everything else. You know, we've made comments on, we have recommendations on, but we're not approving a final landscape plan tonight. We're approving a, a very schematic. Level development plan, so I think, I think we just need to make that part clear, so no one, no one has any misconceptions that. Well, I included a landscape plan in the SDP, so that's already approved.
Correct, that's a really good point. And, you know, Matt brought it up too, and for example, the architecture. One of the renderings they showed at the public hearing had, um, had their, their rooftop equipment, um, cut out. Um, facing back toward the entrance. I mean, that was, was pretty clear, that's where it was. Um, and in this, this scheme, it, there's nothing to really screen that or shield it or make it look like it belongs in the front of the building. So all of those things taken together would have been a discussion we would have at, leading up to final site plan. And, and I, I, I echo and amplify, um. Phil, that, that we're talking about use, that I think we're, I think we're comfortable with the idea of moving from restaurant to daycare. I think that that. In terms of overall impact, that's, that's not a bad way to go, um, you know, relative to, to what, what the potential impact is to the, the site, to the neighbors and all that. I think that the sighting of the building is in question, but given that there's topography challenges. Making the parking inboard of the building forward toward the street is fundamentally fine. In fact. In most of our new urbanism, we probably ask for that where the building addressed the street, not a parking. However, they flipped the actual orientation of the building so that it's the backside and all the service type stuff that, that's addressing the street. So that's a fundamental question to be resolved when they do do architecture and they do do the final detailing of the building.
Yep, can I, can I, can I give another rehashing of that same idea? So they, so, uh, you know, backing up a bit, the sort of planning premise or what I would. Sometimes call the, you know, sort of site branding, is that this is not, this is not a sort of an office park response, right? This is actually a fairly green, uh, well, not fairly green, very green site and context. So when you look at the neighbors, the neighbors are actually natural areas. Uh, and that lead to a, a planned, uh, community, planned residential community. And, uh, and so, y- you know, we don't want the, the office park response, which is appropriate when, when it's appropriate. But here it has a natural context, so I think the site planning brand is an, is a naturally inset, uh, use. So, I mean, and, and, you know, the applicant should be able to sort of continue that on into branding their business as well, whatever it is, you know, the treehouse or whatever it is.
And interestingly enough, we have a, 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 a pretty solid case study about a mile from here, um, with the, uh. The daycare facility that was built off of, um. Um, out behind, um, Metamune, so it, it's not something we, we, we were making up from scratch here out of our imagination. It's actually, there's a pretty good, pretty good precedent for doing a good job of citing these in a, in a, in a natural landscape. Uh, but again, you know, the SDP wouldn't have gotten into that level of detail and, and whether or not this was an L-shaped building or a dogleg shaped building, a round building, uh. You know, something that was shaped like whatever, it would have simply created the, the basic massing, so. I think that's a, a real heavy warning, if not a condition actually, Greg, that, that we get back with our recommendation that. Be very clear about what, what, what this is about. Um, I did want to hit one third point, so, so the use, I think, and, and I want everybody to comment this, the, the, the use is okay. That the relative position of the buildings is okay, um, given, given more design development. Um, and that the impact, because there was so much discussion about traffic, um, and, and for us it'd be safety, frankly, um. One of the things I want to, I want to at least state clearly is that I understand and fully appreciate. Um, the, the frustration that people have with the, the intersection of Lakeland's Drive and Great Seneca Highway and over the years. Um, the, the, the accidents have happened, the near misses that have happened, the scares that have happened, all the things that happened there that would, that would give you pause about any, any more congestion. Um, than, than is necessary. However, um, that happens, you know, two hundred, three hundred yards from where we're talking about. It doesn't happen as a result of the cars. On this street, it happens as a result of the cars on, on Great Seneca Highway, so. And in fact, it seemed, it appears from all, all of the, the discussion and I think Tony, Tony Berger, I lean on you a little bit to. Corroborate this, but the idea that the probably the most dangerous component of that intersection is actually the inbound traffic to Lakeland's from the left turn lane. And, um, you know, that'll be little or effective, th- this, this project will affect that little, to, to little extent. Um, it may add a few more trips, who knows, but at the, at, at, at the very worst, it's a few more cars, but it's not actually. So, um, I think at an SDP level, we've got, and let me, let me do it now paraphrasing, and I want the commissioners to, to either to get to great. Use, use appears good, sighting appears good, um, uh, and, um, resolution of the concerns about traffic appears reasonable. And from there, then we can address all the details that would naturally come in site plan, but do those three things ring true with what you are or anything else you want?
No, Mr. Chairman.
I, I think so. Sorry, Lloyd.
Hey Lloyd, I'm sorry. Lloyd, go ahead and finish.
I disagree, um. There have been over two hundred submissions to the commit, to the council, I'm sorry, to the commission. Uh, of which the vast majority of them are concerned about traffic. I, for one, use that intersection multiple times a day and have seen many potential accidents. avoided. Uh, there were two of my own neighbors who were unfortunately killed at that intersection several years ago. Um, I, for one, would rather wait to hear from the State Highway Commission or the State Highway Administration before we move any, before we move forward on this recommendation. I think it's a major concern to not only the neighbors, uh, but to the uh people who use that uh Great Seneca as well as Lakeland's, and uh I, for one, would not vote in favor of this recommendation at this time.
Okay, do you have anything you can point to, because I I want to, I want to support your your concerns um that connects the trip generation from this project to the to the the safety issues at at Lakeland's and Great Seneca Island?
You know, over, over a period from two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen, there were twenty-three crashes recorded, and that was in the submission made by the applicant himself. Uh, of that seventeen were related directly to that intersection. Um, and as I said, there were two deaths that were not recorded, or at least put into the record by the uh by the applicant. So I have great concerns with that corner. I uh, I I can't tell you specifically about the trip generation and whether they're valid or not. And personally, I think that that trip generation may be faulty because, again, it was taken during the pandemic. People going back to work now, people going to be using that, those uh, that intersection more frequently than they had during two thousand nineteen or twenty. So I have great concerns about the uh generation as well as the overall safety for that of that particular intersection.
I understand, Lloyd, what what I'm asking is kind of for our records, we can include it in the recommendation. What about this project would exacerbate the the safety issues at Great Seneca and Lakeland's?
Again, the sa- the the stacking lanes, the left-hand turn coming out of the uh, out of the nursery, uh, going into a heavily trafficked area, trying to make a left while people coming in off of Great Seneca, and then making that right-hand turn off of a very short, very short runway uh ramp that goes over the bridge, as Tony and I had discussed earlier. Uh, until I hear from the State Highway about how they can remedy that intersection, I really am reluctant to go forward with this.
Jasmine, Greg, Tony, State Highway would have jurisdiction over um an acceleration lane on Great Seneca, but they would, the city would have control over any improvements around Lakeland's, is that right?
That's correct.
So right now, the only, I I believe the only issue in play with the state would be the acceleration lane coming off of a right turn from Lakeland's onto Great Seneca. Right, there's no other, are there any other proposals in front of the state or to be put in front of the state?
Not that I know of. Um, any improvements that we make um at the intersection of Lakeland's Drive to Great Seneca, we still have to coordinate with um SHA. There's, there would still be a component of coordination and, you know, the signal permit. So if we, if we actually construct an additional right turn lane, that has to be coordinated appropriately um with the actual signal itself. It's not a showstopper, but they they will have, you know, their opportunity to like, you know, kind of give their input on what we should or should not do, or what they would not, will, would or would not allow.
Are there any active proposals in front of them now?
Not that I know of.
None, okay. So Lloyd, what would be the um, wh- what what would you expect to get in front of the state and and of of all of it that has been discussed? What what would you expect their their comments on?
Well, again, as Tony has said earlier, uh, they submit something to the state, expect to hear back within thirty days. And I think at that point, we'll have uh further clarification as to what the state may be willing to do in order to alleviate that intersection. That, to me, is critical.
Well, I, I think the, there's a good likelihood from what we've heard preliminarily that the states, the state may come back, very well may come back and say that intersection's fine, it meets all of our standards, it meets all of our, you know, metrics for what a good intersection is, so. I I was gonna actually, before you raise your objections, Lloyd, my my one, my one suggestion of a potentially, you know, recommended condition is that, you know, the the final site plan not be allowed to be submitted until it is accompanied by that analysis by the, by State Highway, by everybody else. I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily feel like we, you know, want to hold up the applicant from moving forward on, you know, the the parts of this design that they directly control, which is on their site. Um, you know, working through that, but I I also don't think it's at all unreasonable to say, look, you know, we're not gonna give a final approval until we have a a clear report and analysis from State Highway. My other question to to Lloyd, to your point on trip generations, um, because we've had that exact same concern on a number of project, I, projects I've worked on trying to get traffic studies done anytime in two thousand twenty and the first half of two thousand twenty-one. I typically, you know, there are standing traffic reports that go back several years from from these intersections or intersections around there. And so Tony and Jasmine, I don't know, were any of those sort of previous benchmark trip counts, be them twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, analyzed as part of the traffic study as well?
I think the, actually, the traffic impact study was done prior to two thousand twenty, prior to COVID.
So I think, I mean, that that's a, that's a really valid concern, Lloyd, but I think my my assumption is what Jasmine said is that those numbers shouldn't be skewed by COVID.
Well, currently, there's a, uh, one of the conditions is prior to final signature uh that the applicant must submit plans demonstrating mitigation of stacking and circulation. Uh, if we can expand that to include, Phil, what you had stated about the State Highway Administration, uh, that could go a little bit along to satisfy some of my concerns. If you can amend that, that the particular condition.
But if they don't have an active proposal in front of them, we're not gonna hear from them. I mean, we have to, there has to be something in this that is actionable right now, or or it'll just, you know, it'll, it'll, it's because they're, they're not gonna say anything until somebody tells them they, or submits something to them to review and approve or to to take care of. I mean, one, one possibility is that the city initiates some form of you know, design exercise to figure out a way to solve for this and then submit it to the state for for some kind of review and approval or review feedback. Or the applicant does, or I mean, but something has to happen for this to to get get something back in the state.
What specifically, Tony, was was requested in the state?
We requested the state to evaluate um e- evaluate the safety of the intersection. Specifically, we asked them to look at um if it would meet warrants for a protected left turn phase. And if the, if if it's possible for um the installation of a southbound acceleration lane, eastbound.
That sounds pretty good, John.
Okay, so they have that request then? I I misunderstood, I didn't think they.
We asked them to evaluate it for that.
Okay.
They'll, they'll, they'll report back their findings and if it, you know, if it is found that it, you know, is not, is needed, you know, if if the condition is satisfied that it's needed, then it would be their charge then to uh implement it.
It, one, one question, trying to play this sequence of events through to the end. You know, off-site improvements like protected left turns or changes to the acceleration lane or or any of the number of things that all of us amateur traffic engineers have, you know, thrown out as as good ideas. If the State Highway, you know, if the applicant's traffic impact study and the State Highway Administration say, yeah, you know, your intersection doesn't quite rise to that level, am I correct that there is no, you know, basis in our code or in law or in anything else that would allow us or the mayor and council to say that's great, but our residents want a protected left turn lane applicant, you need to do that?
That's correct, we cannot, we cannot force that.
Yeah, and and I think that's, that's, you know, I think it's absolutely worth requiring the study and making, you know, making sure SHA provides their analysis, but at the end of the day, if this is something, and and I'm not, don't want to diminish the resident's concern, but if this is something that collectively is as the community decides, hey, we want this intersection approved, that's an issue for the the residents to take up with their elected officials and and push for, you know, public improvements, it's not something we can, you know, foist on the applicant. You know, a- absent a study that says it's a requirement.
Well, I reiterate my position as far as wanting to hear from the state based on the request submitted at this time. And I'm willing to wait the thirty days or whatever the time may be until we do get a response back.
The, okay. So with that said, would would a deferral be something that we would consider? I'm just asking.
So the record's currently closed, um, you would need to reopen your record and the mayor and the council would also need to reopen the records.
Okay. I mean, I I I think, I I personally think that Lloyd is making a compelling argument, and I was concerned, uh, for lack of a better word, about that is, is about the safety issue as well. Um, and I, I just, I think there may, there may need to be some, some strong, a stronger process for us to to undertake, and I'm, and and this is our discussion point, bringing it up, and and I, and I do, I'm, I'm inclined to agree with Lloyd.
We could, you know, all of that's very valid, and and we could make that a condition of moving forward to site plan, I mean, that we we could get them over the hump on use and on um layout with the idea that the the validation of that trip generation and the safety of the intersection has to be worked out before they can, they can come in for final site plan. Because again, the record's closed and and open it, it would force the, would force the council to reopen it, I mean, I I don't, you know, we can do whatever we need to do, I'm not not really worried about that, but um, but we can also, we can also just nudge it past this step because, um, of course, the downside, of course, is if we find out it's not safe and there isn't remediation for it, or there's some some compelling reason, this is the time to to not not move it forward because the use would then be already approved and that twelve thousand square feet, which implies a certain load on the site for cars and all that. I I think, I, what what I'm struggling with is this, and I'll just be perfectly frank. I I think there's some great intuition out there about the potential impact to traffic, but I don't see the data. So it, and that's, that's the thing I'm really, really struggling with. The other part of it is that I also am very, very aware of what folks have experienced in the intersection of Great Seneca Highway and Lakeland's and and just frankly, how scary an intersection it is. But I can't draw a line, it's, it may be my own, my own lack of imagination or or analysis capability, but I can't draw a direct line between, and I'll make up a number, ten cars turning left out of this site onto Lakeland's and then heading to Great Seneca Highway at any given time in the morning or afternoon, whatever it is. And and either exacerbating that that safety condition at Lakeland's or creating enough of a load that would, that would nudge the State Highway to changing any fundamentals about how it's, how the intersection's managed. Based, again, based on on the numbers, which are relatively small, so that's kind of my point, I mean, it it just is a percentage of everything that goes on there, this is a tiny, tiny percentage, so it it makes it, it makes it hard to understand where the, where the data is that supports doing much else, and that's, but that's just kind of how I'm looking at it, and I haven't seen that that connection.
And I, I, I'm, I'm sort of, if you ever get, I'm sort of coming down with you, John, that I'm I'm wary of combining problems or conflating issues or or trying to, a- again, hoist a a potential public works concern or a state highway concern that's not related to this on this process. Um, or I shouldn't say not related, that's not significantly exacerbated um on this process. Again, unless there's some clear code or or, you know, requirement in our ordinances that would make that entire intersection the applicant's problem, which I don't see there being. And and that's not to deny that there's a problem at the intersection that needs to be addressed, I'm just not sure this is, this is how we address it. I is my, is my struggle.
But a project in a vacuum alone, just the project itself, sitting there is one aspect. But there are many other aspects that come into it, just like when we talk about adequate public facilities. Yes, it's a project, yes, but there are other implications that play into this whole thing, and it doesn't sit there alone. And that's my concern.
And 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 that's why I I I agree that we need to get the data, I'm just, I I'm, I'm presupposing based on the data we have so far that it's not gonna show any significant impact, but I agree, we should have the data before we approve a final site plan, a hundred percent.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I mean, to, for, for the record.
The, where's the burden of showing that data? Who's going to be culling that data? Would that be the city? Would that be a private enterprise? Would that be the applicant himself? Who's the one that's going to be responsible for gathering this latest data that we show us the trip generations?
So we we've, we've gone through the APFO process, right, for the preliminary site plan, right? And it's, and it, and the capacity, which is the APFO, you know, traffic capacity, could, meets the threshold. So, so our our data currently aligns with this project does not contribute to a, to a um, uh, an overcapacity at the intersection. It's not, it it's related to safety, but it's not directly, um, you know, sight lines and and, you know, speed at the intersection, it's more about capacity, well, it's entirely about capacity, it's related to safety, but it's not directly about safety. So we don't have a public, adequate public facilities ordinance that discusses off-site uh environmental safety. Um, we often, you're right, Lloyd, we often do talk about, um, you know, uh, sight lines and and the perception of safety, lighting and other things, uh, particularly if we're trying to attach two sites and there's a pedestrian area in between, or there's a parking lot that's shared, things like that, there there are, there are safety concerns that can stretch off-site but be directly um impacted by the development that we're uh reviewing. But, I mean, for the record, the APFO passes the threshold capacities. We'll have another crack at it at final site plan, but uh I don't imagine the data is going to change that much. Um, so I um, I would love uh to take advantage of the the little um uh compromise that Lloyd offered, which is to put the safety concern into the um, into our concerns and and our thresholds to say that the mayor and council, you know, needs to add that to their approval. Um, so we're recommending that they add that to their approval, and then uh staff is gonna come back with a fully report um, and uh at final cycle.
Right, right. So Lloyd, to get to your question about who's the burden, it's a great point. And and that's where I'm, that's where, that was sort of where I was headed with trying to draw a line between the data and what what the concerns are. I, again, to say it in no uncertain terms, I've fully understand and have experienced firsthand the safety problems at that intersection. And every time somebody says it, it's dead on, it's true, there's no reason to deny it, there there are problems with moving through that intersection safely. And the problems exist for a lot of different reasons, and they, 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 they happen regardless of what's happening on Lakeland's Drive, they happen, you know, as a function of the Great Seneca Highway itself. What I haven't heard, I'm just be perfectly blunt, I have not seen or heard a specific condition of turning from that drive aisle that's that's on the proposed site plan out on the Lakeland and heading towards Great Seneca Highway, or or the other way, for that matter, that would exacerbate the safety problems that are on that intersection. I know it seems intuitive, or it seems like it must, you know, adding more cars or it must cause a problem. But but the movement of the cars doesn't quite support that if you stare at it and imagine how they're gonna, how they're gonna get across it now. Having said that, maybe a micro problem begins to emerge with people trying to turn left out of that site when there's oncoming traffic on a busy morning. Okay, I'll give you that, I mean, that may in fact be a problem. But it's a twenty-five mile an hour road, it's, it's, you know, it's meant for residential left turns, unprotected left turns, they happen all along it, it's, it's, it's kind of a natural course of things there. But I I want to be very careful because we have to, we have to make findings based on, first of all, our own zoning criteria, but also on on evidence that is brought into the record. And through it, through it all, and I, and I, again, I fully respect the two hundred plus um record comments we have that that voice the concern about traffic. It it doesn't come with a very specific alignment to what this project would contribute or do to exacerbate that problem, it just doesn't. And and, you know, we're looking, we're staring at some of the top experts in this field during this whole process, right? We've got our own staff, we've got consultants in, now granted, the consultants were working for the applicant, so they're not necessarily gonna amplify the bad stuff, they're gonna amplify the good stuff, no question, but, you know, there we can actually, we can actually compare against performance that that's under- understandable. And and so it puts us in a difficult position, we we, we have to make findings based on evidence, not on what we, you know, what a hunch or or something like that. But I think, I think what what would help make this work out is to strengthen the condition that would put the onus on the, on the applicant to address improvements at intersection, whatever they may be, including the feedback from um State Highway with um our staff's facilitation to to really vet what that might look like. to, to really vet what that might look like and if it has any impact at all. Because that's the fundamental question. If you did anything at all, does it really help the safety? You know, that's, that's what we want to know.
John, I would agree with you on that statement. I agree with you.
Let me do this real quick. Let me make sure I've got the record straight. Do I have any, are any commissioners concerned about the change of use from restaurant to daycare?
Nope.
No.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have concern about moving from an approved 6,000 square foot building to a 12,900 square foot building in the course of doing that use change?
Not based on the use change.
No. All right. Does, does anyone have, and then we, we talked about, but I want for the record, are there any specific safety concerns on the additional traffic or the additional intersection that will be there now with the new drive on? Haven't already discussed.
Right.
That we haven't already just not discussed?
Yeah.
Don't let him hold you back, Danny. Discuss something, discuss something again.
Anything's fine. Well, I, I say that because I, I think we have a condition emerging to address
Yeah.
the, 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 the relationship of this project to what happens at Great Seneca Highway. But there may be some other concerns that we just haven't talked about because we've been focused on that.
School buses. I know it's, again, stacking of cars versus stacking of school buses between the hours of 7:30 in the morning and nine o'clock in the morning for the middle school.
Right.
That is a great concern to me. It's not just a matter of residents going in and out. You've got a middle school that has multiple buses going in and coming out around the same time, you know, 3:30, 4:30. That does impact the traffic.
And, and a lot of, a lot of daycares have their own buses to go pick up students at other schools in various locations. That, that's a good point too. So, yeah.
My, my recollection from the, and Jasmine, correct me if I'm wrong, my recollection from the joint public hearing is that the quote unquote buses are like 10 passenger, they're, they're glorified vans. They're not, you know, big yellow buses. And, and I think, John, or Chair, I, I think for me in this discussion of traffic safety, it seems like we, we may want to further parse it as far as, you know, concerns on the site within the property, you know, concerns with what the applicant has designed and the offsite concerns. Cause I think there are, there are two buckets of concerns that need to be addressed different ways if they.
That's true.
Bill, and that, and that was my concern back in the preliminary hearing about the exit, whether there would be any kind of separation in the roadway as you exit from that facility. And initially the applicant said they would paint the line. But now fortunately, I think they've, they've tried to address that concern by putting an island separating the incoming from the outgoing traffic. Is that correct, Jasmine?
Can I repeat that again?
That the applicant has resolved some of the problem of the incoming and outgoing traffic from that facility on their separate entrance so that there's now an island separating the incoming from the outgoing traffic.
I don't think they showed that.
I, I don't see the island.
You mentioned that though on your presentation.
A lane divide.
Lane divide, correct.
Painted, like a lane divided.
Oh, it wasn't a physical barrier? It's a lane divide with a painted stripe?
Yeah, it's a painted stripe. I'm sorry. Painted lane.
Well, then there's a further concern for me. That wasn't resolved. I thought it was.
Physically, I, I'm not quite sure what you're asking for.
Physically, separate from the inside of the site. Traffic.
Okay.
The, the, the challenge with doing that, you know, based on what I saw on the truck turn analysis is that any sort of delivery truck, when you do that, you're gonna mitigate or make it much more challenging to get, you know, their, their delivery in and out.
It's a fire truck, Phil.
Yeah.
It's a, and so, yeah, they'd have to wire, widen that whole entry, obviously. To get the island in there.
On the other hand, if that proved to be a component of fixing any issues that do come up with the traffic piece, that could be part of it, but we don't have, again, we don't have anything right now that suggests that that solves the problem.
Right.
The, the concern Lloyd is speed coming into the property, that they'll be in the wrong lane and strike another car on the other side?
My concern is multiple. You've got a car going out, let's say, and he's just drifted somewhere in the middle and a car coming in trying to, trying to mitigate stacking on Lakeland's as he's going in, as he or she is going into the property. You know, someone's gonna have to back up. It's gonna be a, you know, standoff at that point.
Fair enough. And, and I think one of the things they did, they did proper in the, in the narrative is that they would put a much more generous radius on the, on the incoming right turn so that, so the cars weren't trying to force themselves into that hard squared up turn going in, which, which would help with what you're talking about, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So to rephrase it like Phil suggested, there's offsite concerns, which I think we've, we've discussed and, and want to get onto the record as a condition for moving into final site plan. On site circulation, traffic, whatever. Is there anything else besides? Matt, I know you brought up, you could, you could stand to see less parking or less, less pavement, but.
Well, I'll, I'll add, since, since Lloyd's pushing that potentially, you know, to widen the driveway, that I, I'd like the opposite, which is keep it as close together as possible for pedestrian reasons. I mean, I know it's not a greatly used sidewalk and I'm not as familiar with this intersection as Lloyd is by any, by any means. But, you know, I'm kind of hoping that we can create an environment where some folks will walk their kids up to the daycare center. Or whatever this ends up being, but to walk to it. There's really not much past it, I guess, but, but, but the, you know, that gap, that pedestrian gap between, at the entry to this, would, I'd love to prioritize pedestrian and not, and not the, you know, and not me when I'm trying to text and drive and just in the middle of the, the road, you know.
Well, and that, that alone is, is, is an indication of where something like a median or an island or, or a break in the, in that area would, might be reasonable because then you have people crossing kind of, not across two and a half lanes, but one lane at a time.
I, I would argue it speeds up the cars though. I don't have to argue. I mean, we can ask Tony, but, but you know, I argue that, that, that kind of protected, small protected, you know, it's not a big protected area. Just speeds up the cars and doesn't actually give you an ability to save your life if you're on a two and a half foot, three foot physical barrier.
Okay. All right. All right, anything else? Jasmine, do you, you and Greg think you have enough to craft the more, the additional condition about offsite traffic and safety concerns as well as what we've discussed for building siding, landscaping, things like that?
What's that? Two-step to more additional condition? Or?
I think we can amend the condition number two. Condition number two, priorly, prior said, you know, prior to final site, final signature applicant submit plans, demonstrate any mitigation of vehicle stacking, circulation along Lakeland's Drive. An amendment to that could be, you know, maybe instead of fine signature would say prior to final site plan submission, you know, applicant must submit plans, demonstrate mitigation of vehicle stacking and circulation along Lakeland's Drive as well as feedback from S H A on safety of Great Seneca Highway and Lakeland's Drive intersection. So we can, we can amend it in that way.
I think that does it.
And we said, we can tie it to the being resolved before final site plan application can be submitted to the city.
Right, right.
Good. And just as, as a question, it's related to the application, but not directly informative. But does, does our body, Greg or John, have the ability to write just a, a quick opinion letter to, to Mayor and Council, asking them to prioritize the review of this intersection based on the testimony that we've been receiving for this application and others?
But Greg, I think that could be in the communication to the, to the Mayor and Council, right?
Yeah, I think we can definitely include that in the communication to Mayor and City Council based off tonight's discussion.
Right. That would be good.
That's good. That's good.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
I mean, that, that's our privilege.
Well, and I, and I think Danny, just, just to, you know, the point is it's bigger than just the site and, and because it comes up as an issue, it's, it's, it might need to get dealt with regardless of the site, you know, it's something that's important and needs to be, needs to be looked at and, and thought through.
Right.
Okay. And then where do we bury or where do we put the concerns about the architecture of the building, the landscape, the extent of the landscaping and the siding issues that we discussed?
Again, we can include that as another condition, recommend a condition if you'd like to the Mayor and City Council, or again, we can include that within the correspondence to the Mayor and City Council. And again, obviously, you know, Jasmine and I heard the concerns raised tonight and we'll make sure obviously the applicant, whose team is also watching tonight's meeting gets addressed with the final site plan submission.
I mean, I mean technically, we don't have to make it a condition because we're not looking at that stuff anyway. We're only looking at the S D P. So you know, it, it, strictly speaking from the letter of, of our responsibility tonight, it's not even relevant, but it, I, it's important to realize that since the exhibits are there that show a pretty well engineered and developed site, that we're not ready to move that forward, only the terms of the S D P.
And then for that, then I would recommend we include it within the, again, the correspondence to the Mayor and City Council.
Okay. All right. All right, commissioners, I think we're, we're, we're wrapping this up to, to some form of motion. It may not be unanimous, but I think we're getting to a point where we've got consensus on how to package this. Any other comments or concerns? Okay. Jasmine or Greg, would you recap then where we stand now on the recommendation wording?
So staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted to the record, the findings and the final staff analysis recommend approval of S D P dash eight five five one dash 2020 to the Mayor City Council with the two conditions.
As amended, right?
As amended, second condition.
Okay.
And I can read it again if you'd like, to the record.
Yeah, at least for the second one that we amended, please.
Yeah, so what I have is prior to submission of a final site plan, applicant must submit plans demonstrating mitigation of vehicle stacking and circulation along Lakeland's Drive as well as provide feedback from S H A on safety of Great Seneca Highway and Lakeland's Drive intersection.
Okay.
Nothing for an updated study?
What ex updated study?
I'm, I'm sorry, with respect to generation?
So they currently have an approved traffic impact statement that was approved as part of the site plan. Now, they may have to send a new one depending on the age of that at final site plan. But the APFO study is done at this stage. If, if we need a new one at final, we can request a new one though.
Right. Does that work with everybody?
But, but what, you know, we didn't mention in that Lloyd, is just that we're, staff is gonna add a bunch of color for both the, the design elements as well as the, you know, concerns that the commission has from this application and others. The tremendous amount of public input that we've received on applications to, to prioritize the review of this intersection and coordinate with the state.
And that goes into the discussion pack to go into the city council?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and you know, unlike, you know, the, the, the way these members tend to go to them with a, with a nice narrative, I think, I think that probably gets a little call out as a, as a, you know, in bolder and a sidebar or some way to really.
Oh.
But you know, the point is it's, it's more than just a yet another point they're running narrative. It's, it's a standalone issue that, that really needs to be addressed.
Right.
To grab, I'm just suggesting graphically in the, in the, the communication, it stands out that way too. All right. Anything else you want to work through on this? If not, I think we have a a solid revised recommendation from staff and I think if I'm, don't see anybody raising their hand or shaking their heads, we're ready for a motion.
I'll make the motion for the recommendation as, as discussed in a, by staff, as presented by staff and with the two additional conditions and color in the presentation letter, so. Sorry Frank, I couldn't find the, well, it's a recommendation, not to worry about.
Oh wait, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you. There, there was one more point. I completely forgot to, to get the answer to this. Jasmine, I remember the pat, the ownership of the path that crosses through now the, this property. What happens to that with this project?
Um, I believe we're correct, right, probably that we probably would seek an easement.
Yeah, the path currently exists today, obviously through private property. I'd have to do some research to see if there's a current, if it's encumbered under current easement. If it's not though, I think we probably would request that as part of, as part of the final site plan that it, that it be put under some, again, public, you know, path easement or ingress, egress easement.
Okay, just get that in the notes so we don't forget it as part of the checklist later. Okay. Thank you. All right. Go ahead, Matt, I'm sorry.
I, I made hopefully a legitimate motion.
I will second Matt's legitimate motion.
Okay, very good. It's been moved and it's been seconded. Commissioner Wessel.
Hi.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Hi.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Nay.
Commissioner Winborn.
Nay.
And I will vote aye. That gives us three, two to move it through S D P. So it doesn't pass unanimously, but it does pass.
Yeah.
And, and I, and listen, I, I, not, not, so that's, that's the result. And I respect the, the commission's split on this and the, and the difficulty in trying to, trying to mitigate this issue that's been brought up by the, by the public. I think, I think we can remain optimistic that we'll get to an appropriate answer before it proceeds too much further, but, but I appreciate your, your stand on where, where your, where your vote is based on, based on your concern. So thank you.
I, I just have, I just have to say, one death is not, is not acceptable. One potential death is not acceptable. I mean, I, I, in the strongest terms possible, safety is, is important. And I think, you know, throughout, throughout our tenure here, you know, there've been opportunities that, that I believe, and this is not a criticism, just a comment, there've been some things that I think that we could have been a little stronger on and, and and one death is, is never acceptable. And I, I, this is my opportunity to say something and I just want to say that.
For sure. Appreciate that. Okay, thanks, Ken. All right, let's move on to our site plan agenda and we have one tonight for S P dash eight seven seven four dash 2021 construction of a 244 unit multifamily residential building at 333 Ellington Boulevard and the M X D mixed use development zone. This is a final site plan. Who is presenting this?
I am.
Okay, Jasmine, thank you.
I'll wait to project team. That's a three, can tech team, can I please have page four fifty-one up, please? Thank you. Staff is before you to present final site plan application S D dash seven seven four dash twenty 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 one. This application is based on amendment to schematic development plan application A S D P dash eight seven three three dash twenty twenty, which was approved by the planning commission on March third of two thousand and twenty one. Next page, please. And I've showed on the screen, the subject property is located at three 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 Ellington Boulevard, which is at the corner of Dumb and Back Drive and Ellington Boulevard. The subject property is part of Crown Neighborhood One Development and the applicant's requesting approval to construct a 244 unit multifamily residential building. This application comes before the planning commission in accordance with section twenty four dash one sixty eight, which requires the planning commission to grant final site plan approval. And the applicant's also requesting a parking waiver for some parking spaces that cannot meet the required seventeen feet inland. Staff would note that a correspondence came in on Monday, which is exhibit thirteen in the record and was forwarded to the commission. The letter noted existing pedestrian safety concerns on Copley Place and Dumb and Back Drive, which is similar to the comments raised during the A S D P application review. This final site plan is not required to provide a new traffic impact study due to the annexation agreement and the associated sketch plan which was approved and that analyzed the traffic impact of the overall allowed buildout in Crown. The current development in Crown as well, under the permitted maximity allowed under the sketch plan. I, I would note that Copley Place is a private road and will still be private, but at some point Dumb and Back Drive will be turned over to the city until the developer has met requirements. Staff has reached out to developer about the concerns that the committee has raised about pedestrian safety and the developers looking into ways into improving that pedestrian safety. And safe, staff would also note that any pedestrian safety measures that's proposing by commoners will require additional analysis in the form of a warrant study or a speed study. And I will have Heather, who's the attorney for the project, to start the presentation and tech team can have the next page, please. And I will have Heather, who's the attorney for the project, to start the presentation and tech team can have the next page, please.
Hey, good evening Chairman Bauer and members of the planning commission, Heather Delapolsky. I'm the land use and zoning attorney for the applicant. In the case with the law firm of Wire Gill and I'm sorry, I'm sort of a floating head in the dark here. My lighting setup. Sort of failed, so I apologize for that, but hopefully you can see me okay. We're very happy to be here this evening. I will be kicking off our presentation with just a general overview and update. Since the last time that you saw us and this project at the time of the SDP amendment. That the planning commission approved in March of this year, so just a few months ago. Then I'll turn it over to our team members who will present in greater detail various aspects of the project. If we could please go to staff packet page four fifty four. Great, thank you. So the folks that we have affirmatively presenting after me as part of our affirmative presentation, but we have a larger grouping. Available for Q and A are Brian Conde and Trey Kirby. They are both representatives with the applicant, with the developer here. They will talk a little about Fairfield and the project generally, but also near the end of the presentation. They'll give a general overview on how the expanded garage will function from an operational perspective. As we thought that would probably be of interest to the commissioners. We also have Chip Baker, excuse me, who is with Dwell Design Studio, our architects, and he will talk about the building massing and the design. And then we have Christine Jean Grandy with Land Design, who's our landscape architects, and she'll talk about the streetscape. The landscape and then just touch on the projects, courtyards and amenities. So as I mentioned, it wasn't that long ago actually that the planning commission saw this project. This was when you approved an amendment to the SDP in March. To permit the corner of the building, right at the corner of Ellington Boulevard and Diamondback Drive. To present as six stories, though, as you recall, it is well within the maximum height established by the original SDP. Of seventy five feet and that was just essentially due to the grading change on the site. At that time, we actually presented fairly detailed images and renderings of the project. Because we were simultaneously working on the final site plan. So I think it's accurate to say that the project that you'll see this evening. Really largely looks and feels very much the same today as as you saw it at the time of the SDP amendment. So we are very excited to be here. We appreciate all of the work that city staff has put into the review of this project over the past few months. In particular, Ms. Forbes, we've had a really very iterative process going back a while now when we started the SDP amendment and the final site plan. And I think it's brought this project to a good place. We are in full agreement with the conditions of approval as proposed in the staff report, so understand and agree with all of those. So with that said, I'll turn it to our team to walk you through the aspects of the project. And as I did note, we do have additional members of our team available this evening, aside from the folks who will be presenting as part of the affirmative presentation. Including our civil engineers who are bowler engineering. So if you have any questions at any point. We do have our full team here available to respond to you. So with that, I will turn it over to Brian Conde and Trey Kirby with Fairfield.
Good evening, all member, Mr. Chairman, members of commission. Thank you for having us tonight or seeing us. You know, just to give a little bit background again on Fairfield itself, we are a national multifamily. Development company. We've been in business for over thirty five years with over thirteen hundred employees. And you know, one thing I like about Fairfield and what's good to know about the communities that we we develop within is that, you know, we're a full service company. That what I say that, what I say that is that, you know, we we are the predevelopment, the developer. We handle our own GC construction aspect as well as the property management component. Currently, we property manage over forty thousand units across the country. We have a different regional office with our local office here being in Arlington, Virginia. And, you know, as being a national company, I still call it a mom and pop shop. And the reason is, the reason for that is, is that, you know, everybody within the company knows almost everybody is kind of scary in that sense and that. You know, everybody, there's more people that have a tenure of ten years or more within this company than I've been involved with in previous other companies. So it really creates a good family feel and, you know, we're just excited to be here and we're excited to be in front of you. And looking forward to working with the neighborhood and community as we get our latest and hopefully greatest achievement here constructed within your city. And, you know, again, we want to thank you for that opportunity and this opportunity. And right now, I'd like to at least transition it over to Chip and really to go through the design and the architecture. That as Heather spoke of previously, that, you know, shouldn't be much more different than when you saw with our SDP amendment. So again, thank you for having us tonight. I appreciate it and I'll be around for the rest of the presentation for any future questions and comments. Thank you. Chip, you want to take over now?
Looks like you're on mute, Chip.
Sorry about that. Next slide, please. All right, well, again, good evening. I'm Chip Baker with Dwell Design. We're extremely excited about this project. We've been working on it for a long time and we feel this really helps solidify Neighborhood One and the. The keystone piece of downtown Crown. As you can see here, again, just to orient yourself, you've got I two seventy running up at the top. Right hand side of the screen, semi highway east west and we're at the intersection of Copley, Diamondback and Ellington Boulevard. Next slide. So this site does have a steep drop to it from Copley down to the corner of Ellington and Diamondback, you may recall is approximately ten feet or one story. So we've chosen to make that the entry piece of the leasing office and development there. You'll you'll follow the progression of of. The facade from Copley down as well as from Ellington Boulevard and it'll open up that that corner piece and that's where the lobby leasing and the. The entry into the building, the main entry, main entry is, excuse me. You also have the existing parking garage in the back, which has. Two bays on it. We're going to expand it by one more bay to get the necessary parking and. The the parking entrance, if you follow Ellington Boulevard down towards downtown Crown in between. Ellington, in between the building and the existing UPS is where there's a service area. Which will provide access into the existing parking garage as well as our trash and loading area. That's also a common service area between UPS, I think it's Harris Teeter and in our building. And. Again, that that helps solidify the solid access going down Ellington Boulevard from the residential into the more retail mixed use district. Next slide. So as you've seen before, the architecture is really hasn't changed much at all. We've got again, this strong entry element with the canopy at Fairfield at Crown. Introducing you, this is the the one part of the project where it is six story. Again, just because of the grade difference. And then the the thing we paid particular attention to is trying to break down the scale of building. Into its elements to address and complement the adjacent architecture of the Copley Residential, which is across the street. On on Copley, which is five story as well as across from. On the Diamondback side, which are the four story townhouses. So. We've stressed high quality materials. It's going to be a combination of brick. Fiber cement siding, fiber cement panel. Prefabricated aluminum balconies, storefront on the first floor there and and vinyl windows. So those are giving you an idea in the range of of materials that are going to be used. And we've also broken down the scale by by breaking this up into different masses. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And you can see the the corners, the three corners of this development are very prominent and. Needed special attention corresponding to the design guidelines. We feel that these become the anchors. And have have accentuated the the overall bays and the height of these. Next slide. I'm sorry, this is the correct one. Yeah, so you can see that the the idea here is we have a very specific base middle top. From a building massing standpoint, we've got a brick base, then darker brick base, then contrast up to a lighter. Brick field and then terminates up at the top. With the fiber cement, again, trying to break these elements down into smaller elements that are more relatable to the street, to the adjacent architecture. And then finally down to the pedestrian experience. That we have. If you see in this picture here, you've got the existing parking garage on the far left hand side. That's the five story stair tower there. You can see how our building engages that just from a point of reference and scale, if you're familiar with that existing parking garage there. Next slide, please. So again, the corners. We have a number of balconies that continue to break up the facade. We do have some limitations. With these balconies where we've been able to provide them, we have. And in some other areas, we haven't been able to because of some of the easement situations. But again, they help break up the massing of the building. And the texture and the color. All to continually reduce the scale. And provide a fluidity of this. One of the other criteria. Was a more urban infill or urban design piece and we feel this addresses that architectural style. By simplified forms, the way we've detailed with brick detailing, horizontal bands, stacked vertical. Coursing in between the the large bays there between the second and third floor, breaking up those window volumes and reducing them down. And and the like. Next slide. So again, here you get a little better idea of a street view, what the procession of spaces might be like along there. You've got the sidewalk, you have a buffer between the street and the sidewalk. And then a landscape planner up against the building to again soften that edge. We've, we've again contrasting brick materials detailing with horizontal banding, rolex sills. The. Little metal canopies over the stair door that you have there. And again, we're mixing and matching with different fiber cement panels. It's not just painted. They might might be some wood tone type products as well. We're still still investigating that. And then we have the pile asters that again further reduce the scale and provide the verticality that we're looking for. Next slide. So here you start to see the the corner along Ellington, the two focal corners or anchor corners, if you will, that are a little more monumental. And then the smaller vertical bays with the base middle and top terminating with the darker. Fiber cement panels at the top there with the the little eyebrow awnings. And. Like the next slide as well. And again, you start to see the layering here of the different materials with the color and the in the. And and the contrast, the rhythm of the columns that we have, pile asters. And again, just, you know, rhythm, scale, those are the big things we're really focusing on here. Next, next slide. Next slide, please. I was eight, nine. I guess we. Address that one. Again, this is another shot of the stair, the ego stairs terminates against the. The sidewalk level there with the decorative awning. And the pile asters with the pedestal bases, different contrasting colors. And next slide, please. And so here's a final shot, looking at the corner of Ellington, going into that service area and the right hand side, you can see the loading dock. Which is a coiling door, the trash area, another coiling door, and then we have the transformer screen. Exterior transformers that are screened with a decorative landscape screen on your procession into the into the parking garage there. And. Pretty much wraps up the building aspect, though. I'll turn it over to to.
Christine.
Christine, sorry, drawing a blank there. Thank you. Christine from Land Design. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Next slide, please. Um, well, just wanted to say thank you for your time this evening. As Heather mentioned, my name is Christine Jean Grandy. I am the landscape architect on the project with Land Design. We are very excited to be a part of this project. We. What we are looking at right now is the overall site plan. So for the streetscape designs, we reference the Crown Farms design guidelines. As a guide to help us understand the type of amenities allowed within the streetscapes, the streetscape dimensions and also planting recommendations. With the guidelines as a basis of understanding, we worked with Public Works and also the environmental planners. To get their feedback and input throughout the course of the design process. The improvements in the public realms such as the sidewalks, the planting palette, the foundation planting against the building. As well as the tree wells. And site furnishings like the benches, the bike racks, litter receptacles, they're all incorporated into the streetscape design and it's consistent with the vibe and the character that you see. With the rest of the Crown Farms neighborhoods. The design of the streetscape for Ellington at this block is unique because. It is a multifamily residential development that really acts as this transition between your retail core and the residential neighborhoods. We worked with the environmental planner on selecting an appropriate street tree for this street. And the streetscape plant palette and the rhythm of the tree wells really begin to cater towards that medium intensity residential use, which then transitions. To a more quiet, lower density residential use as you move plant south. For Copley and Diamondback specifically, those streetscapes basically mirror the existing constructed streetscapes across the street. Which then essentially completes the streetscape from building face to building face on both of those streets. Those two streets are planned to protect the existing trees and street lights in in place. We worked with Public Works to ensure that the planting, particularly along the foundation of the building was appropriate within the easements, like right at the base of the building. Next slide, please. So this is one of the courtyards within the development. This particular courtyard contains a pool on one side and then year round amenities on the other. Directly adjacent to the building's club room. Flexibility was a key factor in the design of these courtyards, making sure that like group gatherings as well as small individual needs are catered to. Some of the features within this courtyard are multi for purpose lawn panel, outdoor grills that comply with the twenty foot offset from the face of the building. Areas for different types of seating and also like a lounge area with a fire pit. Next slide, please. And so as similar to the larger courtyard, this smaller courtyard was designed with flexibility in mind. But while still providing nooks for individual use, this courtyard features like a central dining cooking zone that can be accessed all the way around. From the lawn panel on one side, the dining area on the other side, a pergola structures on one end. This courtyard really showcases like an open concept, so to speak. So visibility and circulation was is seamless throughout the space. And so that is a summary of the streetscape and the private interior courtyards. And with that, I'll hand it back to Fairfield to talk about parking.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Okay, you can go to the next slide, please. Just in general, we during with the construction of the multifamily residential piece. We are adding on additional bay to the existing parking structure that will go up through the five levels as required through the originals. Schematic Development Plan. Then also as part of that, there is a private agreement with the condo docks within the garage. For both the retail owner as well as the residential owners, once that. New bay is constructed, the retail commercial condo owner will take the first. Of take over the first level, the second level and half of the third level for retail and commercial parking. Then subsequently, the residential owner will have half of the third level, the fourth level and the fifth level as residential only parking. And which we also meet the required parking elements for both the commercial component and the residential component. So as you see here on the ground floor. So as you see here on the ground floor one here, all the blue spaces are indicated as retail parking. The shaded gray area is the existing structure and the plain, the, I guess, non-shaded area is part of the new bay that we are constructing. Next slide, please. And again, oh, we are here, level two, roughly the same thing, all commercial parking shaded, existing and unshaded, new structure. Next slide, please. Then this is where you see the transition from the commercial to the residential component. And then the residential parking, we have, you know, it's secured gated facility. And then it moves on up to the level four slide. Go ahead, you can change this slide, please. And then the same, this is all the residential parking and then level five, please, next slide. And then this completes the parking structure as we will be required to provide. And then all the residential access points are designated on the third, fourth and fifth levels. Yes, we'll be getting some convenience with the first and second levels of our residential component. But that's, you know, that's what happens when you're in a mixed-use facility. And, um, you know, we just make our residents aware of that as, you know, they're signing their leases and sick etc. And I believe you go to the next slide. Or we should be finishing it up now. Yes. Okay. And so from here, I just, you know, again, thank you for allowing us to present our, our new development for you within the city. We're happy to be here and I think at this time we'll be more than happy to answer any questions, concerns, comments that you may have. Thank you.
I believe John Bauer may have lost connection. All right, Lloyd, do you want to take over as the vice?
Uh, any, any questions regarding the presentation at this time?
No questions.
No question.
That's
I want to get to some comments.
Credit your staff with that. Jasmine and Greg have been very good to work with throughout this process. And I think we met with them so many times early on in the stage of this that it really guided us through this.
I have a quick question. I noticed that there are some half windows as you go up, I guess it's maybe Ellington. Uh, what do those half windows represent? Is that, is there utilities down there? What are, what are those half windows on the street level?
Oh, I can feel that. This is Chip. Those half windows represent some of the back of house spaces that we've got. So we have the two-story spaces at the corner there and the leasing. And as it runs back up into grade, you start to drop off. So you've got, uh, some of the other clubhouse functions. And then again, just stops. And then we have a building step and it goes up to the first floor level of units once you get past there.
And what is the mix as far as types of apartments?
They're all apartments, they're all for rent and it's a mix of studio ones, twos and a stack of threes. So we have 18% studios, 60% ones, 20% twos. And I think we have, we threw a mix of four three-unit bedrooms for, based on staff's request.
Okay. Any questions from anybody else on the commission? Well, I for one, I'm very excited about seeing this project coming to fruition. Uh, I've noticed that lot's been empty for quite a number of years. And, uh, honestly, I think it'd be great for the retailers as well as the restaurants and for the citizens of the city of Gethersburg, having this kind of mix.
Yeah.
Please go forward.
I was gonna make a bad analogy and say that it's, it's not, I, I have eaten off of plate, a donut that already has a bite out of it. But it's no one's first choice, right? So it's been wonderful to see you guys bring this forward and fill in this, this missing piece of what's going to be a pretty delicious donut. So I echo, I echo Lloyd's thoughts that it's been, it's been a void for, forever. And it's, it's painful every time I pass it. So, uh, I'll, I'll give a little commentary too about the architecture. I'm sure Phil has some stuff to say too, but I, I just wanted to sort of say that I think you did what you said you were going to do, which is make the transition from the more industrial building to your west and, and around the residential components. I think it's well broken down. It's a relatively simple facade. There weren't too many gimmicks used. Uh, it was actually just broken down, I think, very effectively within a very gentle palette. Uh, and I really hope the balcony stay, I think we're only, we only have Washington gas to get through. Uh, but balconies are, are, are big and I think an important component, not just for the residents, uh, but for the street safety as well as some good shadowing on the building itself. So it's all, it's all wonderful and I'm, I'm sure it'll be fine. My nitpick, um, now that I've given you a hug, we'll give you a little smack. So it's the, my nitpick is just the, the three corners, the three sort of dark brick corners. Don't have the same pedestrian wainscote sort of detailing that the infill panels do. So you've, you have those raised rollax at your infill panels at the, at eyesight at the pedestrian, pedestrian level. Uh, we need something in the base of those three dark corners that, that recognizes that it's a base, that recognizes that the person standing next to it is a little over six feet for me and most folks not. And, and so you get something in there. It can be contemporary, it can be whatever you want it to be, but something needs to move in that mass of masonry that sits at the corner, I think. Whether it's, you know, a mimicry of your earlier rollax for a little shadow or it's, you know, the whole base comes out or I don't, you know, I'm not, I'm not solving it, but something needs to happen there that recognizes that people, a person is standing next to it.
Does that make sense? Our chair has joined us again. John, would you like to partake in the discussion?
Oh, sure. Thank you. Well, but, but the matter, you finished with your comments?
Uh, well, I just, uh, is that clear or am I being esoteric?
No, I, I think it's clear. So if I, if I understand you correctly, you're looking for some horizontal banding to further break that, that base mass down? Or are you concerned that if someone's standing next to the brick, that they may not, they may not, there may not be enough contrast between the person and the brick?
Well, I'm not sure either one, and it's, we're splitting hairs, right? But I'm not sure either one of those is probably the right connotation. So if you, you have, you, when you look at the elevations, that within six feet of the, of the ground plane of the sidewalk, there are areas where there's really no articulation whatsoever. It's a sheet of brick at the corners, right? And so something in there ought to recognize that you're standing next to a sheet of brick. And so, uh, I'm not saying it needs to be a horizontal rollax or, or, you know, anything. I'm not, you know, it could, it could go up and down, it could reflect the windows above. I'm not, uh, I'm not picking and choosing what your detailing is there. But I think it's, I think it's, it doesn't work as a sheet of brick at the pedestrian level.
Okay.
And again, we, to give you a little more texture too, because again, I don't, I don't want to solve it here or, you know, you can work with, you can work with staff on this. I think I'd actually like to get a, just a little piece Jasmine, just in the the conditions to just say that, uh, you know, staff to work with applicant on the, on the pedestrian detailing at the three corners of the building, three public corners of the buildings. And, uh, and I think I'm sure all of you can come up with some very small moves that will recognize that somebody's standing next to that brick. And this relates back to our master plans and to the, into the Crown Farm master plan that really our focus is on the architectural, um, you know, harmony of the neighborhood. But most importantly, as a prioritization, pedestrian, uh, uh, scale of the building that's next to you is one of our primary concerns. So I'm not advocating, you know, like, you know, grillage and all kinds of wacky stuff, but something ought to be there at that base to recognize there's a person standing next to it, whatever that solution is.
Okay.
And, and if I can hop onto what Matt said, I'm flipping through the rendering. The corner of Diamondback Drive and Copley is the worst offender here because of the drop-off. Your window sill height on that corner is basically at, at height. Whereas on the other, on the other side, you at least have the windows come down to normal window sill height to sort of break it up. But that, that Diamondback and Copley Place, I mean, at eye level is a solid wall of brick.
All right. Yeah, I've got a few ideas we can kick around and we present to you later day, but I appreciate the comments.
And I would just to be clear for me, I think I would, I would just like to see a condition. Uh, I'm, I'm in favor of this application and I'll, I'll be voting to approve. But I would like to see a condition added that, that staff has to work with the applicant to, to sort of tweak pedestrian area of those three public corners. That's all, not, not to bring it back to us.
And, and the first condition of approval does require we sub plans to staff based on the conditions of approval and the comments. We are definitely amenable to that additional wording that we would work on that.
I, um, I have a comment, two comments and a question. I, I really liked the interior courtyard. That was, that's actually beautiful. In terms of, in terms of the, the first floor, is that, is that like a story and a half? It, it looks like it's like more than one story.
At the entry level?
Yeah.
That is a two-story open area.
It's a two, okay, okay. Yes. All right. Thank you.
Danny, is that it?
Yeah, yeah, that, that was it. Thank you.
I think we've lost our chairman again.
Uh-oh.
Oh, no. I'll, I'll add one more thing Lloyd, for the record, just to say that, uh, you know, since Danny brought up the courtyards is that it, it breaks some of our normal rules about, uh, you know, depth to height of the buildings around of it, around it. But, uh, as we often have said in council, I mean, in planning commission, that, uh, sorry, they, uh, that as long as you compensate with a really great design on that interior, you can sometimes win over that lack of proportion. So, and I think that applicant did it here and we don't always see that. Well, often we'll see an ordinary courtyard be brought in with these tighter proportions and that doesn't work. So, thank you.
Any other questions by the commissioners? Otherwise we'll go to a wrap-up from Jasmine and then we'll have our discussion.
Commissioner Kaufman, if I can interject real quick, um, we still need to ask if there's any public comments on this allocation.
Public.
Yeah.
Any public comments then, please?
Um, you want to run that? Yeah, can the staff can run the video on how to participate?
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
We do have one speaker, it looks like, Thomas Conway.
Mr. Conway, can you unmute yourself? There we go.
Yes, thank you. Good evening.
Please go right ahead.
Could we, I'm on Zoom and I can't see the screen. I just see a timer now, but if you go to, I think it's page four, six, eight of the presentation, you'll see an overview of the location. And I think Jasmine referred to exhibit 13, my note to the commission. My wife and I own a townhouse condo at the Copley across the street. We also own a condo at the Copley, uh, across from Copley Place. So we're directly impacted by this project. And first I'd like to thank the commission because, um, you've added an important condition to the approval and that is the parking situation. We moved in about three years ago and parking has been an issue ever since we moved in. So thank you. That is an important, uh, piece to address. I think that the applicant, um, is willing to address those issues and make the parking mandatory with the, uh, with the rental units. The point that I wanted to make, it's a safety issue for us and for many in the neighborhood because I've got a cross in the morning from where we live at the townhouse condos across Diamondback. And to the point earlier made when discussing this Everbrook Academy, in terms of direct impact and trip generation, this development is calling for 244 units, 190 of which are studio one bedroom. So conservatively figure 200 to 400 trips per day, residents of that building. Typically, I think probably younger households going to and from work during rush hour. My concern is when I go to the gym in the morning at 5:30, there's nobody on the street. So it's not going to be an issue. But the times of the day during rush hour, it's already pretty bad. And with this additional development, it's going to get worse. And so I just need to get some clarity from the commission because it seems like it gets put back on the master developer. How this safety situation is going to be dealt with? Because I think I like the project. You guys have done a good job. I have no problem when we moved in, that, that site has always been slated for development. It looks like you're doing a good job with quality materials. I'm all for it. My issue is how do I get across Diamondback safely? Because it's already a challenge during several hours a day. And it's just going to get worse. Tell me that something specific is, is, is being worked on.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Uh, anybody else have any questions from the, uh, from the gallery?
Nobody else has their hand raised at this time.
Okay. Can staff or perhaps, well, I think this, the burden goes on staff on this one. Can you give us some response to Mr. Conway's concern about trip generation and traffic?
Um, as I noted in my, uh, earlier in the presentation, I think there, there's this concerns about pedestrian safety uh, within Crown. We've noted that there have been some incidents with pedestrians and vehicles currently out there. And I've noted that, you know, Copley will still be a private road, but at some point, Dumb and Back Drive will be turned to the city. But fortunately it can't be turned to the city until the developer has met some requirements. But staff has had conversations with the developer and they ensured us that they are looking into ways to improve pedestrian safety along that area.
And at what point, so that Mr. Conway understands, at what point does the city take over?
Um, I can, to me still there, I'm not sure, I'm not sure when that will occur.
Okay. Cause there were earlier concerns and other intersections within the development that have now been rectified since the city has come in. Is that correct?
Did you clarify then?
There were other intersections within Crown Farm that are now under the direction, I believe, of the city? Is that correct or not yet?
Not yet.
No, because I, I brought it up a couple of weeks ago, remember Greg? About, um, the intersection and I'm not, I'm, I believe it's, it's an intersection adjacent to this. And because I was concerned about there possibly being a four-way stop sign, but you were saying that it's not turned over yet to the city. So once that happens and then you, the city will revisit production safety, four-way stop signs, all that kind of information, in, in, in thing. Is that correct, Greg? Am I off on that?
Yeah, you're correct. At this time, the city has not taken ownerships of any of the roads within Crown that will ultimately dedicate to public, to the public or city use. I don't believe the roads will be turned over until such time as they go off bond. Um, and the way the bonds are set up is it relates to, I believe, the entire Crown development. Um, so neighborhood three would also need to be completed out before, before that situation would occur. Um, as well as obviously this, this multi-family building as well.
But if there are any traffic concerns and, uh, safety concerns, the city would come in at certain points to try to rectify those with the builder, the developer, correct?
Correct. Yeah. We, we've had a good working relationship with the master developer and we have brought these concerns up to him. Um, and I know they, you know, they have voiced to us at least that they're, they're willing to look into it. Um, I, and as, you know, we have Tony here as well, um, and he can, he can probably add a little bit more to it as, to this. But, you know, at such time as we do take over the roads with the maintenance as well, um, that's another time when the city could re-explore, you know, if anything additionally did happen. Um, and then we could take the, obviously the corrective action at that time as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions, any other concerns? Uh, Jasmine, at this time then, if you would mind, uh, reading the staff recommendations?
So staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendation grant SP dash eight, seven, seven, four, dash 20, uh, 21, final cycle and approval and parking waiver finding a performance with sections 24, 170 and 24 dash 171 of the city's zoning ordinance with six additions and that includes.
Very good. Thank you, Jasmine. Uh, any discussion on the, uh, on the findings and recommendation? Seeing them, John, do you want to make the, uh, announcement?
Actually Lloyd, go ahead and finish it up since you've got this, you're, you're doing this. And I, and I'm not entirely sure how reliable my connection is going to be for the next 10 minutes. So please finish it up.
At this point then, I'm asking for a motion.
Okay, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and the staff report findings and recommendations grant SP eight, seven, seven, four, dash two zero, two one, final site plan approval and parking waiver finding it in performance with sections twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-one of the city zoning ordinance with the five conditions that were presented to us this evening.
I believe there are six conditions.
Oh, there's six? I'm sorry.
Yes, I added one condition.
I'm sorry. Right, right, right. Thank you for that correction with the six conditions, um, presented this evening.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Very well. Take the roll call. Uh, Phil?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And myself, aye, unanimous, five zip, zero. John, you can take it over from there.
Thank you all and I apologize for the technical glitch. I'm not entirely sure what was going on, but, um, it seems like a restart took care of it anyway. Um, I think that's it for our agenda, regular agenda. We're going to from, from the commission now, right? So, uh, Lloyd, can I start with you? Thanks for filling in, by the way.
Thank you so much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Outstanding project.
Thank you.
Uh, really, the only thing I wanted to say was I want to thank the, the chair for being so patient on a earlier, uh, issue that we had and for, uh, patience in trying to work out what is a very difficult, I think, very difficult situation with respect to that particular issue, uh, that came before the commission tonight. So thank you, Chair, for taking care of that.
Appreciate it, Lloyd. Thanks. Uh, Phil, anything tonight?
Nothing for me.
All right. Danny?
Uh, yeah, I do. I have something, um, I, I was just, I just received news that I have a new, a new opportunity for myself. I have, have been appointed, um, the deputy city clerk for the city of Rockville.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So I'm very excited about that. Um, you know, my, my allegiance has been with yeah, but well, I'm going to, it's the, well, I'm looking at that as a compliment. It's going to complement what's going on and I'm, I'm very excited about that opportunity. Um, I, I'm very also, you know, excited to see how that's going to, to merge into what I do here with the city of Gaithersburg. But I'm looking forward to this opportunity.
Hey, we have a mole in Rockville. That's great.
And, and, and things are moving, moving great along with the, um, the upcoming MPCA, um, annual conference. So we're, we're trying to come up with our, our numbers as far as, um, how much we're going to charge. But we're going to try to keep it very reasonable as we have in the past. So of course more later. Thank you so much.
Well, Danny, uh, I mean, congratulations, honestly, that, that's, that's, that's great, great news. And, and honestly, all kidding aside, um, you know, the, the mayor will, will rightfully call Gaithersburg the greatest city in the world. Um, but you know, Rockville's a close second, so you're working for a good city. Um, that there's no, nothing to be ashamed of there. So congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Matt, anything tonight?
Uh, I, I just, it's a quick advocacy for advocacy. I think, um, I think, uh, the, the idea that planning commissioners should be at the front line of an APFO, um, you know, review with the politicians, you know, it's a public facility, right? So it's, it's up to our elected officials and the, and the bodies that sit below them, um, uh, to improve public facilities. Uh, and, uh, there can't be a, a more rational and intelligent, uh, group to advocate for the improvement and the prioritization. You know, everything, everything can use improvement, right? But we don't, we don't have an unlimited budget, but the prioritization of those improvements, uh, is something that any and every planning professional ought to be advocating for at their, at their, at their, um, public official and, um, and the, the actual agencies that are in charge of those, uh, those things. So, um, I'm just advocating for advocacy. So, and we're, we're the, we're the best ones to do it, I guess, is what my point was. So, thanks.
I would tend to agree. Um, the only thing I'll add is, um, and again, this is a little bit of a reflection on, on some of the discussion that happened during an earlier application. Um, and it told, just a brief story, a number of years ago, we had a, an application come before us, um, where there was, there was overwhelming opposition from the, um, from the local neighbors, from the, from the neighbors that were immediately adjacent to the site and, and some of the folks that lived in and around the area. Um, not important what project it was, but, but that happened. And, um, interestingly enough, the initial findings from the planning commission were against approval of, of this particular project. Um, they went through appeals, it went through all kinds of the, the legal processes. And one of the, um, interesting outcomes of it was a, was a lesson I learned. Um, and at the time Stan Abrams, who, who is very well respected in land use law, um, in the state of Maryland and was at the time this city attorney, I believe John Ray was a city attorney at the time, right? Or was he? Yeah. Um, he, he had written, um, an interesting piece, um, that, that referenced a concept called, um, I think, I think if I give this right, plebiscite, plebiscite, plebiscite of the, of the neighbor, neighborhood. Um, and it effectively talked about, um, when making findings as a quasi judicial body as we do, um, where, where our first and first priority is to really look seriously at the law and to find, at the grounds for making findings that are based in what the law says or what the ordinance is saying and what, what the evidence provided is. Um, it's important to recognize the concerns and the, and the opinions of the, of the public, but we have to be also very careful that it's rooted in what the actual findings need to be based on. And I was kind of reminded of that in this discussion and I, and I, and I wanted to just provide that as background so that I didn't come off as appearing hardheaded about what it was we were, we were trying to make findings on and, and that, that I was for or against it, but that I was trying to be very careful that imagining this moving forward on appeal, that there were grounds for the findings we had and that we could, that they were defensible in the, in terms that were, um, um, specific to what we're actually charged with doing. And, and that's why the discussion about offsite and whether the state and group, state highway, things like that. Um, you know, it, it, it was, it was a lesson I learned early on in working with the planning commission, working on the planning commission. There, it's, it's very difficult because you do hear, um, strong opinion and the strong, strong, um, desires from the community for, for, for what, what they would like to see. On the other hand, we had to be also very, very mindful of what, what it is we are, uh, we're charged with, with making findings on. So that's, that's where my perspective came from, which is not to say I'm right, you're wrong. But, um, I, I wanted to give you a little bit of framework on why, why I was being very specific about drawing direct connections, not, not correlation, but causation in, in what was being said about things like safety and traffic and what the project itself was, was going to do. So, um, that's just sort of an aside, just a little bit of a side story and then I thought I'd share it. Um, one day I'm going to write that down because I find the concept so fascinating. It's, it's such a unique and interesting concept, this idea of plebiscite of the neighborhood and, and how in certain conditions it ends up being a referendum, right? And that's, that's, that's where in, in certain legal circles it can be used legally and, and effectively. Um, but we as a body can't just arbitrarily use it, um, in, in trying to, in, in making findings or in, in deciding on, on the, on the level of even application, we can be very, very careful about it. So interesting concept and a little bit about why I was, um, really being, really being hard headed about, about some of those, those, uh, those causation issues, not just correlation when it came to some of the safety question. So anyway, I'm done with that one. So that's, that's my share for tonight. Was I mute that whole time? I guess I would not. So, uh, from staff is next, I guess Greg, start with you, please.
So we do have the 2020 annual planning worksheet long form, um, for the commission's, uh, review and approval tonight. Jasmine, I think you are going to do a presentation on that.
I'm just very briefly, you know, that time of year again, when staff brings the annual report to the planning commission uh, to review and approve, uh, uh, as required by the state. As of last year, during, or during the wall, we didn't present the 2019 illustrative, uh, document, uh, to you. So, um, this summer, we will combine the 2019 and the 2020 illustrative, uh, document with, um, to the commission at a later date. And, um, if you guys have any questions about the annual work form, um, I believe the planning commission need to make a, a motion, um, to approve the annual worksheet.
Okay, sure. Any, any questions before we do that?
I'll, I'll just make a comment and say it's always fascinating to read. I mean, it, it's, I mean, some people might think it's a little dry, but just, you know, the number of units, the number of development, the, the number of, uh, public facility improvements, all that stuff is just fascinating to me to, to read about and just remind us that we're not a teeny tiny little village. We're not New York either. Uh, we're, we're a decent sized town and, and it, um, and, um, uh, you know, uh, but the, the scale has only, I think, gotten, uh, through that report. So.
Yeah, that's, it's, it's really an eye opener after what you realize what happened in a year around here, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty, uh, pretty impressive. And by the way, um, thanks to staff, I know that that's no small task to go back in and call the records and, and figure out what, uh, you know, go down through all those questions and, and make sure we've got good data to, to share with them. So nice work on, on the part of the staff, by the way.
Yeah, I love data. I just don't want to ever have to be the one who has to assemble it.
That was all he's, uh, doing on the worksheet.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess, Mr. Chair, that, that you want a motion?
Yeah.
I move that we accept the 2020 annual planning worksheet long form as proposed by staff.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Kaufman?
Aye.
Commissioner Westall?
Aye.
Commissioner Winborn?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Thank you very much. That passes, let's make it pretty and show it to everybody.
Thank you, Jasmine.
And this last thing I have is, um, an update that the next planning wish meeting is July 7th.
Okay. And you were, you were asking before we went on actually to make sure we, um, let Miriam know, uh, our availability in July?
Yeah, we will follow up with an email, um, to everyone, um, as a reminder, uh, for both the July 7th and the July 21st meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. John Schlichting, what's happening up at the front office?
So thank you all for the heavy lift this week. Two long meetings, um, Monday and Wednesday. The Lake Forest Mall, um, we're in the home stretch. Rob is working on revising the, um, master plan based on the direction from the work session and the joint public hearing. And, um, we got great accolades from Tunisia on Tuesday. So we are very excited about, you know, continuing this process, um, and finishing it actually. Because, uh, planning commission approval, actually you will, you are responsible for approving the master plan amendment um, on July 21st and then making a recommendation to the mayor and council to adopt it on August 16th. So we are very excited about that and on, on budget and on schedule. So we're, we're there.
Well, John, I'm going to interrupt because if, if the state questionnaire long form was, uh, if we, if we shut our appreciation for that, we have to show our appreciation times some factor of 10 for the work that, um, Rob and the whole team did on, on, on pulling together the, this master plan. Because, um, I know in another place in time, that would have warranted outside consultants and somebody dedicated to it. And you guys pulled it off in, 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 in a great way, but also while doing your regular jobs. So I, I have to, you know, offer applause and, and congratulations for pulling that off because that's, that's no small task.
Thank you, John, because that is exactly what happened and it's pretty remarkable. Um, and then the only other thing I wanted to say is that we have started discussions about the planning commission being the guinea pig for going back to live meetings at the council chambers on September 1st. So get prepared for that.
Oh.
The, the real question is which council chambers?
Right. That's true.
The old council chambers. Because the new council chambers won't be ready till probably the first of next year.
We can all put hard hats on and, you know.
Actually, uh, you know, in, in a stranger, that's good news. I mean, the, the idea that we're going to get back to some level of normalcy, um, is really good news. I'm glad to hear that, that's, that's a possibility for, for as early as September, frankly.
Right.
Yeah, good.
And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much.
All righty.
Frank, thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Did you have anything you wanted to, to, to add to the?
No, I, I will hold my, uh, 30 minute speech for maybe another evening. Nothing, nothing tonight.
And Tony, I, you know, we hadn't seen you at all and now we've gotten to see you a lot in the last couple of days. So thanks for being here.
No problem. It's my pleasure to help support John and his staff.
Excellent. Well, glad, glad to have you. All right, guys, if there's nothing else, um, have a good rest of your week, a good evening. Um, we're adjourned.